Meeting of the South Hunterdine Regional Board of Education is called to order. Adequate notice is required by the Public Meetings Act, which provided on December 10th, 2020 by posting a notice with the respective clerks of the City of Lambertville, Borough of Stockton, and attached with West Amwell. It advertised on December 3rd, 2020, in the Hunterdine County Democrat and Central County newspaper. Please stand for flag float.
By the way, this is a flag of the United States of America, two, three, or four, which stands one nation, one government, individual liberation, justice, and justice for all.
Rule call. Lauren Braun-Strengstens?
Here.
Martha Dennis?
Here.
Jim Gallagher?
Here.
Kristen Trulli?
Here.
Diana Prusell?
Here.
Ronnie Tom Marino?
Here.
Megan Warner?
Here.
Philomena Hengst?
Here.
Kevin Cobles?
Here.
Moving on to correspondence. We have several attached correspondents.
PTO, PTA.
Yep. The very bottom here. PTO, PTA, and LAEF update. We'll start with the PTO. If anybody from the audience here, PTO, would like to speak, please come on up.
Hi guys, Jessica Hartigan, West Amwell, PTO. We're still running our Mega 50-50 right now. The total's up over $3,000, so it's pretty awesome. It's gonna pay for nearly all of our Field Day t-shirts, online sales end Thursday, but tickets can still be bought in person at trunk or treat up until 7:00 PM Friday night. Trunk or Treat is this Friday from 6:00 to 7:30 at West Amwell School. Tickets can be bought in membership toolkit, or they can be bought at the door. The weather is looking a little shaky, so we'll be making that call Friday morning of what we're gonna be doing. Our 6th grade is still killing it with fundraising. They're over 8,000 right now, and they still have their Madalinas fundraiser and their wrapping paper sale coming in. And then, we have Holiday Shop coming up at the end of November, and that's about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. PTA, anybody from the PTA who would like to speak, please come on up.
I actually have an update on PTA. Stefan. Thanks to everyone who came out to support our Scholastic Book Fair last week. We made a healthy profit and funds that we used in part to support the LPS Birthday Book Program and to fulfill all teacher book wish lists. Right now, we're working on setting up a toy drive in collaborations with Fisherman's Mark to launch the second week of November. There will be five boxes set up at different locations around town. We hope to involve the student council with decorating the boxes and promoting the drive. Stay tuned for details.
All right. LAEF, anybody from LAEF wanna make a statement? Moving on, we already spoke about the correspondence. Need approval of a minute? Need a motion?
Sooner.
Just a second.
Okay.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Sorry, any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
Moving on to reports, we'll start with the report of the Superintendent of Schools.
All right, welcome everyone. A few things that I wanna highlight. So, first, a quick update on our COVID situation and our COVID tracker, which is on the website. You can kinda see where we are. Hopefully, everyone received the email I sent out a couple hours ago. And basically, we've had some challenges at the West Amwell School over the last week. So, myself and Principal Miller and our nurses have been talking with the Health Department since last week, and then again, several times today. We made the decision, working with the County Health Department, to basically quarantine a specific grade level because of an outbreak. So, this is the criteria that actually the Health Department uses for an outbreak. Basically, what they're looking for is three or more laboratory confirms of the PCR test. And if that's the case, and it's all within a 14-day period, they consider that an outbreak. So, their recommendation was to us to quarantine the grade level for 14 days. So, we're starting that tomorrow, and all of our students will be on remote instruction. We plan for it throughout the day. Fourth graders who were impacted will take home Chromebooks, and they already did for today, so they're set. You know, just something to keep in mind, we realized, not only, so we spent a lot of time trying to work with the Health Department on, was it in school, out of school? We really didn't come to a final conclusion, because a lot of our students participate in a lot of activities outside of school that they're all together with, whether it's soccer, football, cheerleading. So, as we were doing the contact tracing, that was a difficult process. But we determined, because of the situation where we have at least three within that cohort, that this was the best way to go. So, hopefully, we'll contain it. You know, they've all been kinda contained to a grade level, and we'll monitor, and hopefully the rest of the building will be in good shape. We do have the two days off next week on Thursday and Friday because of the NJEA Teachers' Convention, so that helps a little bit as far as the 14-day as well. So, just wanted to kinda throw that out there. Obviously, you know, if you've been following along, you know, we remain in the yellow. So, if you're familiar with the chart from New Jersey, there is still a segment in New Jersey, it's in the orange, but we've been traditionally in the yellow for several months now. So, that is our COVID update. So, obviously, next week's a big week, right? A week from tomorrow, a referendum. What I wanna say is there has been, especially within the last week, a lot of information that's been out there, you know, and I realize with social media how that kinda plays out, but it's really, really important for us and for me that folks make an informed decision based on the correct information. So, I am, and I'm gonna send this out tomorrow morning, but I am launching a document, because I know, you know, this has been a long process, right? We started this six, eight months ago. So, if you go to our website right now and you look at the referendum page, it's three pages long. So, obviously, I know folks probably don't have the time to go through each one of those documents on that website, especially at this point with a week left. So, what we tried to do is come up with a document that basically, I think, puts everything that you really need to know, the most important pieces, in one place. So, what you'll see is, on the one side, and there's links, so everything is linked, the research that's been done by the board. So, how did we get to today, right, or to next week? All the work that was done and the different options were looked at and different configurations that were evaluated, that's here in a slide deck. Then, the traffic study, there's been a lot of conversation about traffic with, you know, the renovation at LPS, and will this work? Has the district researched this? So, we did do a traffic study. It's been on the website, but again, I realize there's a lot of information on the website. So, you're having the ability to click it there as well. Something we've been talking about, especially in the last few weeks, this goes with our senior citizens, who obviously may be on a fixed income and are very concerned about taxes. There is a senior tax freeze that they could work through the state on, so this is a link for that. And obviously, if you're aware of anyone who this could impact, please pass this information along. There's an application process. Obviously, it depends on their income, and they can qualify to have their taxes frozen. This is just a little version of what the new renovated pre-K4 LPS would look like. And then, you have our tax calculators right here on the left-hand side. So, if you're a Google Sheets person or an Excel person, you can take your choice. And then, on this side, the three videos, right? So, video one, which talks about all the highlights and challenges that we have right now with our two buildings. Video number two, that talks about, you know, I know there was some misinformation out there about that LPS flooded during Hurricane Ida, was not accurate. So, it talks about, you know, not only that it didn't flood with pictures, but also all the mitigation strategies that were done 12, 14 years ago, that obviously we reaped the benefits of. And then, video number three, which by the way, I'm actually gonna show tonight as part of our meeting, because it just came out, and looking at the number of views, we're about half of what we were for videos one and two. But it really does kinda follow through on a student who graduated from the district and experienced some challenges with ADA accessibility. The new 5'8" building. And then, this is the community presentation that I've really been using at all my information sessions. So, if you haven't had a chance to go through one of those information sessions, either live or on a Zoom, it's here to access it as well. And then, obviously, at the bottom, you know, that will take you to the website with all the information. But for folks that are saying, all right, I really haven't been up to speed, or I haven't had time to follow along, where can I go to to kinda get the Cliff Notes? This is it, where you go to this one-pager, and you can pick off different things, and this really kinda gives you the history from day one and then the overview through the process. So, this is something we worked on, thank you. Many board members also had input on this and helped putting together this information, because we really thought it was important that factual information get out to the community before next Tuesday. So, as I mentioned, there is, you know, the highlight, and this is a really important piece for me, the ADA accessibility. I think I mentioned at our previous meeting, one of our voting locations is the LPS gym. Obviously, we're trying to help out the city because of some challenges they have with flooding, and we were very excited to do that, but one of the first questions the county asked us, was is it ADA accessible? So, obviously, that's the reason why, one of the major reasons why we're having the referendum, and it's not. So, they're gonna do some different configurations temporary just for the day, so it can meet those requirements. But here's a quick video that I wanna show, and our folks at home. If you haven't had a chance to watch it either, I just really think it kinda summarizes where we are and why next week is so important to us.
My name is Brandi Hofstadter. I graduated from South Hunterdine in 2010. I went to Lambertville Public School for my elementary schooling, and it was difficult to navigate as a kid in a wheelchair. Because I was the only kid in a wheelchair at that time, a lot of issues of accessibility got pushed onto me to deal with as an individual. The awkwardness and the figuring out always landed on my shoulders, and that's way too much for a kid to carry. The bathrooms were not accessible, and there was, I think, two accessible entrances to the school, and the rest of the entrances/ exits I couldn't utilize. And so, there was moments of friction of movement in everyday life that just added more time onto my schedule, and that I was responsible for rerouting and figuring out. Now that I'm older, looking back, it's easy to see that those daily moments of friction of movement had a huge impact on the amount of time that I would be in class and what my expectations were for myself of being in class on time and being fully participating in class, but also teachers' expectations of me to be on time. And I think because those accessibility issues were just accepted, that it was also accepted that I wouldn't be in class on time and I wouldn't be fully participating in class. I didn't even learn how to ask for what I needed as a child, as far as accessibility needs, because I was never granted that in my everyday environment. The way a fire drill was practiced at LPS was when we would do a fire drill, all of the other kids would be led out of the room by the teacher, and I was instructed to wait in the room for another teacher or someone previously designated to come help me out of the room. And that was because every classroom at LPS had to step out the back door, and because I was inaccessible, then I wouldn't be going with the rest of the kids. It was obviously unsafe if there was a real fire. I suppose I would just be considered a loss. And like, the reality that I experienced was that, like, my safety was not important either, and that it could be designated as something to figure out afterwards. When you build these environments that are inaccessible, you also create a lot of events of inaccessibility and exclusion that have bigger impacts, like in my understanding of safety and even knowing what to do in those situations. That, I think, is also not a realistic direction of what a disabled person should do in the event of a fire or any situation. The inaccessibility that I experienced as a child at these schools definitely had long-term impacts on me. It laid a foundational narrative about the importance of including people with disabilities in everyday life, which, when you are disabled, moving through spaces that are built exclusively for able-bodied people means that inclusion of disabled people is not important, right? And that accessibility is something for a disabled person to figure out themselves. The referendum is important to me because it changes the narrative of the importance of disabled people in society. And that's something that I started learning when I was a child, that it felt like our alienation was acceptable, and now that this referendum is coming up and removing those accessibility barriers, that to me, rewrites the history of what's important, who's important to include in a school environment.
... funding that we've received and been promised for the project. And then, just a reminder, basically, our different locations, you know, we will be using the LPS gym. That area will be secured for the day, so we rearrange our classes, we won't have kids in there. Obviously, our kids for Phys Ed will be in a different part of the location. Then, we have, obviously, Stockton Borough, the firehouse, and then the municipal building in West Amwell. The polls do open up at 6:00 AM, and they do close at 8:00 PM, so we're hoping that we get folks out to vote. So, that is my update for this evening. Do I have any questions from the board?
Can you talk a little bit about the security at LPS? Since we don't have a question yet?
Yeah, I mean, you know, right now, obviously, for this particular project, there's a lot of security that's built in. The security for the actual election day, we asked extra police just to be on site so we can make sure that we separate residents from our kids that will be in the building. You know, in this day and age, most of the time, schools aren't used as polling locations, but obviously, because we're in a unique situation with the flooding, we thought it was important to provide that service. So, Ms. Canyones has been working with the County Clerk in the Office of Elections for over a month on this, several walkthroughs. She's done her due diligence, and we have a really good plan to make sure everybody's safe for the voting day. Any other questions? All right. So, I think our next up, I'm going to introduce Mr. Hewitt, our Director of Kirkham Instruction and Assessment, and he has a presentation for us this evening as well.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. I'm Dr. Hewitt, Director of Kirkham Assessment and Instruction for the District. This year, I get to present to you our results from last school year's Access for L's test results, as well as our DLM scores, which I'll talk a little bit more about what each of those stand for, what they test, and things like that in a moment. Typically, I stand up here and present before you the NJSLA assessments, so our typical standard New Jersey assessments in ELA Math and Science for the school year. But last year, those did not take place as a result of the pandemic. However, I believe in about a month or so, I'll be back to present our Start Strong assessments, which were administered this school year, just over the last month, that assess those same subject areas throughout the district. So, let me jump into this. What is the Access for L's? So, these are two different tests, the DLMs and the Access for L's. So, I'm gonna start with Access for L's. And basically, these are assessments that focus on language. So, language proficiency in four areas, in, as you see, speaking, listening, reading, and writing. And basically, they're going to test our L's, which stands for English Language Learners. So, just kind of for frame of reference, we have English Language Learners, our students in our classrooms, and we have ESL Programming, which is English as a Second Language Programming, just for some of those terms that you're gonna hear me throwing around here. The Access for L's, which tests our English Language Learners, language proficiency, is scored on a six-point scale. So, you see the levels listed there on the screen from entering through reaching. Entering is considered a level one, and reaching a level six, and then everywhere in between. So, who gets these tests administered to them? And it's basically anybody in our district who qualifies for English as a Second Language Program. So, all L's, kindergarten through 12th grade, that are eligible for services, would be assessed and are assessed each school year in the spring. How is it administered? Basically, our kindergarteners are the only ones that take a paper pencil test, and all other grade levels are online. Last year, despite the pandemic, all students were required to come into school to take this assessment. There was no remote option, although much of it for most grade levels is online, they needed to be in school to take the test. So, there was no taking the test at home in like a hybrid model. And we did have all but two students come into district to take the assessments. As I break down the data, these are just numbers of how many students were assessed. So, at LPS, through kindergarten to 6th grade, we had 42 students assessed. In West Amwell, 13 students were assessed, so a total of our elementary ages, 55 students testing. Up here in the middle school, high school, we had a total of 20 students testing, so district-wide, we tested 75 total students. So, as we get into the next few slides, when we look at performance levels, think of 75 students as our total population that were tested. So, I broke it into grade level bands. So, kindergarten, first, and second grade is all bunched together there, and as you look at that graph, along the horizontal axis, the x-axis, you'll see the grade levels, kindergarten first and second. And then, on the y-axis, the vertical axis on the left-hand side, you see how many students performed at those different levels. So, you see the performance level in the key to the right-hand side, and you'll only notice grades, or I'm sorry, levels 1, 2, 3, and 4, simply because although it's a six-point scale, 5 and 6 don't show up, because we didn't have students performing at that level. And please keep in mind, as we look at the scores, this isn't a score of, oh, you did really well, or you did really bad, or a grade or something that goes on a report card. This is truly measuring progress. Students are in the ESL programs as a result of testing at a level of proficiency where they need additional support. So, we would expect to see students that are enrolled in ESL programs to be scoring in these levels that we're seeing here on the screen. For 3rd through 6th grade, same setup, the grade levels along the bottom, the numbers of students in each performance list, level listed in each bar. It shows you how many students in each level. And then, 7th through 12th, the same thing, 7th through 12th grades along the bottom, the numbers of students in each performance level indicated by the y-axis on the left-hand side, the vertical axis. We are also required to break out our data into different groups, into subgroups. So, what I did was I broke it out by gender here. So, you'll see females versus males of all 75 students together. If we have 10 or less students in any one group, we're not able to report out, just because of the small sample size, it wouldn't be valid or reliable data, and it could also breach confidentiality of students. So, therefore, I tried to look at larger groups of subdata within our 75 students. So, I broke it out into males and females, and you can see how students performed there based on gender. And the other way I broke it out was by special education versus general education students. And again, you see special ed to the left-hand side, so any students who qualify for ESL programs, but also have an individualized education plan, an IEP, would be included in the information shown on the left-hand side of this visual. And on the right-hand side are our general education students, those students that do not require special education services. However, they do receive English as a Second Language Programming. And I think that's important to note, too. Our ESL students are general education students unless they qualify for an IEP or an individualized education program. So, what supports, the real key as to this information that we receive from this testing is to determine how can we best support our students. Our ESL supports, our ESL programming supports, include a variety of things, from small group instruction, which is focused in those four different areas of language, reading, writing, speaking, and listening, to sheltered instruction training is one of the supports we've given to our teachers. About four years ago, we provided sheltered instruction training for all of our teachers throughout the district, preschool through 12th grade. That's 15 hours of professional development that would teach teachers how to best meet the needs of students who qualify for ESL services in their classrooms. Not in the ESL classroom, but in the general education classrooms throughout the district. And so, that training took place, as I said, about four years ago, and we continue to have teachers work together and share strategies that have worked, whether it's in department-level meetings, grade-level meetings, on in-service days, faculty meetings at all different times. But also, I have to say, a lot of teachers have gone out with an interest in learning more about how to best support their students that are coming to them with English as a second language, and often turn key and share just through collaboration. There's also something you'll see in quotes up there, can-do statements. And the can-do statements are what the ESL teachers have access to that they share out with all teachers that work with the students, with the L's throughout the district. And a can-do statement basically aligns what a student can be expected to do if they happen to test at a level one, or two, or three, and so forth. So, they give them ideas of what can be expected of them in any classroom that they can use to help in their planning to best meet their needs. What else? Oh, and we also hold regular parent meetings for our ESL families. We hold about two, we're required to hold two a year, which we did hold just two last year as a result of the pandemic. They were virtual and not as well-attended as we have seen in the past. However, we typically hold three or four a year, double what's expected by the state or required by the state, and we've actually had a really good turnout. It's really nice, at these evenings, we also have some of our middle school, high schoolers come down and offer community service to help with childcare. We also offer pizza and things, but we get a nice turnout, and at those times, we're often able to bring in community resources to speak to the families about what's available to them, but also provide instructional strategies and other supports that we have here in the school that we can offer parents to best help support their children, too. So, that happens throughout the year. And now, this year, the last bullet, the ESL Program Evaluation being performed, is ongoing right now. We just started that. We have Dr. Solange Lopes-Murphy coming in, holding focus groups with teachers. The plan is with also parents, as well as students, and to give us any kind of feedback that we can get. We're always looking for ways to improve, and we hope that she's able to come back and give us other ways and strategies and things that we could do within our programming to best support our L's. So, that's ongoing this school year, which I'm sure there'll ultimately be a report out here as well publicly with her findings. The alternate Access for L's, similar to NJSLA, has an alternate test, which is called the DLM, which is the other test that we'll talk about tonight. Same thing for our ESL programs. They can also be assessed in an alternate way, which would basically be a test that's given to students that are not able to take the typical ESL program or Access for L's. Unfortunately, or fortunately, however you wanna look at it, we only administered this test to one student, and therefore, we don't report out all of the results. However, it assesses the exact same proficiency, and it also is scored on a six-point scale, but the levels look a little bit different. It's an A1 through a P3, initiating through developing are the levels, but we did have too few students to report that out. The DLM stand for Dynamic Learning Maps, which are the tests that are given to our students that would typically take NJSLA, but due to special needs, would not, it wouldn't be appropriate for them to take the NJSLA assessment, so we administer a DLM. The DLMs, although NJSLA was not administered last school year, the DLMs were still required to be administered last school year. And they are basically portfolio-based assessments, so you're collecting pieces of work throughout the set time period, and then submitting that collection of work off to the state. All of it is standards-aligned, and it's in the areas of English, Language Arts, Math and Science at specific grade levels. It is administered online. And again, this was another test that was required to be done in person, as opposed to remote last year during the pandemic. Scored on a performance level of four levels that you see there. And again, we had a smaller sampling of students that participated in this assessment, therefore, we don't have actual scores to be reporting. Therefore, we don't have actual scores to be reporting out upon because of the small number of the sample size. And that's what I've got for tonight. Are there any questions from the board?
Um, can I just, maybe just a little bit to?
Sure.
To how some of these, it's not the same. You talked a little bit about the PD that we've known the past, but how some of this work is informing, the equity work we're making toward with these students in particular, the work in our community.
With our blended learning cohort? Sure. So when we talk about equity throughout the district, we're talking about students from diverse backgrounds. So certainly, we look at our Ls as a as a subgroup of students from a diverse background in many cases, as well as socioeconomic, students with disabilities, which our DLMs would certainly assess as well, some of our more significantly disabled students, you know. So we certainly take all of this information into into account when we start to talk about differentiating throughout the district to meet everyone's needs. Does that answer the question? Any other questions?
Not for public comment, sorry. No, you can ask when I talk during public comment.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, and then. Just want to present this. So it is that time of the year where we have to present what's called our Annual Violence and Vandalism Report, and it's based on two reporting periods that took place throughout last year, the school year. So just a couple of things as far as background. There is a form that when we have situations or incidents that occur that we are required to complete. One is called our SSDS form. So this is a form that kind of provides an overview of what the incident was. It does go to the state DOE with information for their database. And then when we talk about harassment, intimidation, and bullying, this goes as well along with it. So for every situation where we have an alleged or even a confirmed HIB, we have to throw out an SSDS form. So it's not just when we talk violence, oftentimes you'll think of things like vandalism or theft, or, you know, things along those lines, not just for that. This kind of shows you last year, so the good news from last year is, obviously, it was a unique year where we, you know, the kids weren't mostly in school all at the same time until the spring. So our numbers were very minimal. If you look at the different categories that we report out on, you know, with violence and vandalism, so really, it just came down, and we had four reported alleged HIBs that were confirmed as HIBs when our HIB specialist did the investigations for the middle school, high school. And then if you kind of look at our district trends, you can see where we are compared to the last three years with our numbers and kind of what they look like. And again, a lot of zeros for last year, which is a good thing. And we hope that that continues every year, other than our HIB reports. And then, you know, and this goes a little bit with Jeff was talking about, you know, all the different things we try to put in play. So hopefully, the numbers on that last slide are low or minimal every year. Obviously, the last, you know, year and then this year as well, we continue to focus on equity in a lot of different areas with our students. You know, one of our board goal, or district goals, and which was last year, was social emotional learning, and that continues to be one with a lot of work that we're doing day in and day out at all, you know, our two elementary schools, then our middle and high school with our students. We're fortunate that we, you know, have counters in each one of our buildings. Obviously, we did, as Jeff had mentioned, with the college planning process review that we did last year, we, you know, have made some changes even here at the high school. So we have an awesome council and support team. We're fortunate to have a student assistance counselor at our middle school, high school. We have several anti-bullying specialists that work. I am the district anti-bullying coordinator, so I kind of oversee that process. But we have specialists who are basically charged with doing investigations when we do get reports. And then the state of New Jersey does allocate two weeks, although these things should be happening all year long, but they do allocate two weeks during the month of October for Week of Respect and Violence and Vandalism Awareness Week. So a lot of different activities are taking place in various buildings related to these two topics. But again, it really should be something that should be happening all year long. So, and then this week, actually, we're doing something that's called Red Ribbon Week here at the middle school, high school, which really is a focus on making healthy choices with a focus on, you know, substance abuse. And there's a lot of different activities that our folks have been doing this week, started actually today through our morning announcements and things along those lines. So these are all important things. Obviously, the programming is really important to determine our needs, and we take a look at the data from these to see whether or not there are specific areas we need to focus on moving forward in reference to our programming with our students. Any questions from the board first on the Violence and Vandalism Report?
I mean, the great prevention of dimension training for all staff, when, is that this year? Is that upcoming?
That's been ongoing. Mr. Hugh, do you want to talk a little bit about that, or the CPI training we've done, when that started?
Sure. So we have tested. We have done the CPI training for the last three years now. We had the entire district trained in the verbal component of CPI, which is just de-escalating situations with students in the classroom. And we've continued that each summer during our new teacher orientation so that we keep teachers up to date throughout the district. So everyone in the district has been trained.
Any other questions?
So the trends that we're seeing here, I mean, obviously, they're not longitudinal, but they're, but over the last, since 2018, I mean, they're definitely, obviously, moving in a direction sort of. But I'm glad, really glad to see that in, you know, in this work. So I just wanted to highlight that and say, you know, that I appreciate being, seeing how the components of this program does seem to be showing that, you know, in our school community, and that we continue to invest our time and energy in these sorts of programs.
Agreed. All right, so now we have to open up our public comment, but we have to kind of do this in a unique way. The first public comment is only on the Violence and Vandalism Report, and that's required by law to be able to do that. So if you have any questions specifically about this report, you can come up for public comment, same time limit, as far as three minutes. And then if nobody has that, or any questions about the Violence and Vandalism, then we'll close out that portion, and then we'll open up our normal public comment for anything that folks would have. So any public comment first, just on behalf of the Violence and Vandalism Report? All right, we'll close that one, and we'll move on to the first of our two public comments. Just want to remind everyone, we have procedural requirements that include standard of contact and need to be filed by members of the public during public comments. If a member of the public becomes disruptive during a public meeting, including during any period for a public comment, a member of the board charged with running a public meeting shall warn the disruptive member of the public that can continue disruption may result in being prevented from speaking during the public meeting or removed from the public meeting. Disruptive conduct includes sustained inappropriate behavior, such as, but not necessarily limited to, shouting, interruption, and use of profanity, or comments seen as abusive, obscene, or defamatory. Members of the public will address the board. You have three minutes to make a statement or ask some questions. This is the part where you can address Mr. Hewitt's presentation, if you'd like. We will now open the public comment. Please come up, state your name and municipality. Full name and municipality, and we now open public comment. Would anybody like to?
How you doing today? My name's Chuck Clark. I'm a City of Lambertville resident. I have two daughters at LPS. And here tonight, I'm glad to hear that there's going to be some security at the polls on Election Day. I just have two questions. Is one, having the the polls at the schools, is that just the function of downtown, the ACB building being flooded out? And, and, okay, and was there no other place, the firehouse wasn't begging off or anything like that? Okay.
So we look at it as like a one-year thing, and then go back to?
The other question is, you've been following along through Zoom and stuff like that, but it's good to be here tonight. Can you kind of elaborate on, or give a status update on the class three officer at any of these, whether it's West Amwell, LPS for next year? And kind of maybe some of the opposition points as to why, you know, whether it's budget, whether it's other things? Can you, can you touch on that? Great, thank you.
So the status of where we are right now is that we do have a class three officer here at the high school, middle school, who's here five days a week. We have a class three officer who's five days a week at the West Amwell School. We had a open position come about with a resignation from our class three officer last year that was at the Lambertville School. We are working on replacing that position. Part of that process, this past August, the Board of Education adopted a new policy and a regulation, 7440, Safety and Security. It really laid out the specific roles of what a class three officer does at a building and their responsibilities. And then we worked with the City of Lambertville and West Amwell on reshaping our shared service agreements in order to work with each municipality for that service. So that is, that shared service agreement is actually on our agenda this evening. I'll talk a little bit about it more when we get to it. But if that shared service agreement is approved by this board and then approved by Lambertville City, City Council, then we would move forward in replacing that individual, that position at LPS. Thank you.
Hi, Jen Bachelor, West Amwell resident. I want to start by recognizing and thanking everyone before me for all of the long hours and the thoughtful and tough conversations I'm sure you all have had with regard to the referendum. I truly do understand that you have a pretty thankless job. I realize that we all share a vested interest in doing the absolute best we can for our entire community. I understand that when faced with the choice of abandoning both elementary schools and building one new combined school, the board and superintendent acted on the information they had before them and decided to keep one of the two buildings. Part of that decision was made in light of the fact that taxpayers would receive some debt relief for a renovation versus a new build only. When choosing which building to keep, I understand that this was a no-win situation, and you could not possibly make everyone happy. After considering all of these things, I could probably be persuaded to come on board with the referendum. And in fact, those of you who know me know that I was actually looking forward to working with the district and the community to ensure that we address, address the needs of our aging elementary schools. I was heartbroken when the middle school site location was revealed. Sitting on the sidelines all of these months now and unable to offer the full support I so badly wanted to be given has been difficult. I am here tonight to urge you all to truly consider the very real impact the site of this future middle school will have on my home, my privacy, and not to mention security, for myself, my family, and my neighbors. Members of the public have been invited to tour the elementary schools to see firsthand what was needed to be addressed. I'm here tonight to invite each of you to please come and stand on the baseball infield ninety-three feet away from my property and put yourself in my shoes. Come and hear the sounds of the announcements and bells buzzing up at the high school, and imagine what that's going to sound like when it is emanating ninety-three feet from my property. I invite you to stand at the end of my driveway on a school day when my three kids wait for the bus in the morning and witness firsthand what it looks like when another large vehicle tries to come down the road at the same time. Imagine how is that going to play out with buses and cars all trying to make the turn in and out of the single driveway proposed at that site. Come and see how close all of those cars and buses will be to my driveway. Adding to these considerations, think about what happens to quiet evenings at my home when public events, as promised, start being held at this school. Furthermore, there will be eighteen-plus months of construction to endure, again, ninety-three feet from my property. We've already endured weeks where we were unable to drink our well water because of a terrible taste and smell, which stemmed from the pump test recently performed. This was a pretty grim sign of what's to come when this construction commences. When we bought our home thirteen years ago, we moved in next to a baseball field that was regularly used for just a few weeks each year. Do you see how significantly this plan impacts where I live? I understand that the current proposal has elements that please a lot of people. I also understand that even small groups of people with special circumstances have been given great consideration. It would be easy for me to selfishly echo and amplify all of the other issues found with this plan, but that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm only asking to please provide some very real consideration as to what this particular site location means to my home and my family. Thank you.
Hi, Shara Durkey from Lambertville. And I first just want to say that because I could, I watched the open Zoom that Mr. Souza conducted last week. And I've seen every presentation, and I've watched all the videos, and I may be preaching to the choir, to you guys, but I found it incredibly helpful, even though I already had the information. Hearing it again, a little bit more information and listening, even though I didn't have any questions, listening to the questions that the people who were there did ask and the answers was incredibly helpful. So I'm glad that you're still doing it. And, you know, if anybody knows anybody who's on the fence, I would encourage any of these, you know, options. They're really helpful, even for those of us who've been following along. In terms of, I know you're voting on the shared services agreement, and the, I have questions tonight about the process moving forward. I understand that if you pass the shared services agreement, they go to the municipalities, they agree, and we're good now until the end of this school year. Moving forward, if there comes a point where the, you know, majority of the board says, we don't think that having class officers is necessary anymore, I just want to make sure I understand the process. Sometime, maybe, I guess in the winter, the superintendent does an audit of the safety measures to look at how this is all going. That goes to, I guess, the safety committee, who then reviews it. Now, is it the safety committee that would say, okay, we're good with this? Or no, we don't think we need an officer? Or would that go to the rest of the board? You know, where you'd say, okay, we're thinking this, what do you guys think? And you take a vote. If either it's just the committee or it's the entire board that makes this decision, is that then the end of the line? And then they report back to the superintendent, okay, no officer, and then it just automatically doesn't go in the budget? Or could the superintendent sort of override that? And in this whole process, does the public have any sort of knowledge or, you know, exposure to what's going on, to what, you know, the process is, to what the, what conversations are happening among the board? Just so that I, I just want to be clear, because I I've realized that I haven't been clear so far. You know, is what the, with the very, like, straightforward, if this comes to a point of, is this necessary or not? What exactly does that process look like?
So let me show, it's probably a good idea if everybody sees this, because I don't think I showed it yet. If you go to our district under our goals for this year, and you look at goal number five, when we talk about like the audit and what that will look like, so it's right here, there's actually a live link, and you can see exactly what we're talking about, of what's going to be done. And some of this is already started. Let me make this a little bigger. So this is a process that will take place over the next several months. So you can kind of see some of the things that are happening in October, November, and then December, which also includes an open forum for any community members. And then, and realize, this is about everything, right? So obviously, the class three is an important piece, but it's also about all of our district safety and security. What I mean by that is our protocols, you know, the terminology that we use, the training that we're providing, our buildings and how our buildings are set up. That's really what it's all about. So what will happen is, my goal right now, if all goes well, is to come back to the full board, right? Not committee, but to the, because I think this is an important conversation for the full board, and provide basically the results of how this all played out. And I'm not just doing this myself, I have someone else who's working with me, helping with the data. And then make a recommendation to the board as far as whether or not this should be included in the budget for next year or not. That's early enough where we really start to dig into the budget conversations in February, and we don't adopt officially with our public hearing until April, the budget. Typically, it's like the last Monday in April. So during that time is when the full board will have the opportunity to discuss this amongst themselves, and then eventually make a decision. amongst themselves and then eventually make a decision on two things, which kind of go hand in hand. If they're going to include it in the budget for next year, and then assuming they're going to do that, then they're obviously going to eventually reapprove the shared service agreement with each one of the municipalities. And I don't know if they would want any tweaks to that or anything else that's an opportunity to do that as well. Or make the decision that they wouldn't include it in the budget, therefore, there would be no need to approve for the next following school year, those shared service agreements. Also realize that each of the municipalities have to renew the shared service agreements on an annual basis. So I'm assuming that's a process that they would go through, waiting till after our budget and where we fall with our budget. And then depending upon that, then they would begin to have that conversation, I guess, sometime in May, June for the next school year. So that's really how the process, those findings of this report, I will provide in public, to all the public. So, you know, the board first, but then the public at a public meeting, and then we'll kind of go from there. So there's a lot of work that has to be done from now until February, as you can see. You know, it's pretty extensive as, as far as the type of data we're going to try to collect.
Okay, that's, that's super helpful and I-
Shara, next, you got to come back up next.
Oh, I thought I still had twenty seconds.
Nope.
I'll be back.
Okay. Anybody else like to make a statement?
Don't start. Hi, my name is Andrea Little. I'm in West Danwell Township, and I have one child at this high school. I'm here today, within three minutes, I'm going to only talk about two issues that I'm having challenges with on the referendum. I helped to fit these within the time, and my first one is LPS is just too small to be offering pre-K to four. And I'm still challenged with trying to figure out how to make that space work for adding in five classrooms while taking away four. I bring this up because the big buzzword has been Twenty-First Century Learning, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, creativity. We do that well, our teachers are fantastic and work within their confines, but the fact is, is that the big issue seems to be children with special needs or special help in the pullout sessions. I don't see how that space is going to accommodate the amount for our entire district, along with only three classes per grade with no flex space. So I need, I personally need more clarity on that and anyone that really wants to go back and look at the map and think about what that's going to bring as a burden to the class sizes of three per grade with the intent of what the future may hold, as well as probably no space for choice within the elementary. My second point is traffic study. I did review the traffic study, I went back and reviewed the traffic study, and I still find it really challenging to understand how the busing will work, as well as the fifteen space lane for cars. It says that there is space for like a single file, a double file, depending on seven buses, talks about fifty-two spaces for staff. And then it says in the study that there would only be forty. Well, I did the numbers, thinking about all the teachers, with the aides, with the administration, with the nurses, with the, you know, cafeteria, with maintenance, and I'm coming to fifty-two pieces, spaces. So there's no space for visitors, from what I can tell, and I haven't seen that in the study outlined. And I would like to see that type of in-depth to feel the confidence that this has been looked at. Fifteen vehicles waiting for drop-off, go by any of the elementary schools, you see more than fifteen vehicles. I really am challenged to understand, like, what is our current rate by school of that and knowing that parents are going to be doing pickups? And that's the right of the parents. And then also, has there been any support for more crosswork help? A traffic study with potentially putting in a light there? And the NJ DOT also requires permits, if there's a hundred peak hour trips additional, and has that been addressed? This does not even include the problems that we're going to have on Lambertville Rocktown with the middle school. Again, is a light being proposed, what is the traffic pattern going to be like? And last but not least, we went to this board seven years ago as a region. The two key points of why we became a region was synergy and education for Twenty-First Century Learning, as well as a cost savings to the district. I don't foresee how this is being a cost saving.
All right, three minutes. Stop. Or I'm going to shut off the next public session.
Okay. Very much, thank you, I was just finishing my sentence.
You can come back up next.
I appreciate it, and I hope that we can get those answers resolved. Thank you so much.
So I'll take a couple of them, we'll talk first about the Lambertville site. I mean, obviously, we've spent a lot of time, I know we've had conversations about it, you know, offline. You know, we've had a lot of folks, you know, take a look at that, meeting my administrative team to see exactly how it would work. We redesigned it, reconfigured it many times with our architect. Realize that some of those rooms are going to be expanded in size, because we're going to be taking some walls down and making some spaces even bigger, moving our pre-K to where, from where it is now into where our kindergarten is and kind of reconfiguring. It still leaves us an extra room as a flex space if we need it for any particular sections where we might have, you know, four sections instead of three. You know, we're, we're basically coming away with a brand-new music space, a brand-new art space, a brand-new STEM space, a brand-new media center. So I feel as though it does absolutely meet our needs, and we spent a lot of time looking at that. From the traffic side of things, you know, Dave Miller was, was involved with our traffic studies specifically of, you know, on average tracking, like how many, you know, and this went on last year, and this was even more than it typically would be because of COVID, but how many parents on average drop off at the West Danwell School that if we obviously convert to a district pre-K four? What does that translate? Those numbers were given to our architect and our engineer when they put together the traffic study. I've talked about already that I think we need to look at students that live across 179 that right now is considered to be a walking area, however, we all know that not many students are going to walk across the four-lane highway without a crossing guard. So what does that mean? That means more parents are going to be picking, taking the kids or are taking the kids and dropping off, which means that there's more traffic than there probably should be. So could we not work out something with even our existing buses, because we have room to be able to pick up some of those students and take them to LPS? Therefore, it would cut down drastically on the amount of parent traffic that's in front of the building. And we're estimating four to five buses. So that study looks specifically at about seven buses, we're only going to have four to five, we have one now, we do think we can make it work. We've looked at the staffing side of it, estimated exactly how many staff we'd lose by moving the fifth and the sixth grade out, how many we're going to gain by combining schools, what does that all look like? What do we do for large events where we could offload our staff parking to an alternate location, so we have spots for parents? We've done that in the past and run a shuffle. So we've kind of played all that out as best we possibly can, and we feel as though we can make it work. I know a lot of folks have been judgmental on that, and I understand that, but we feel that we're confident that our plan will work. Anybody else want to call, if I can make a statement?
Yeah, my name is Doug Graver from Lambertville. It's so hard talking with these masks on. So I guess it was seven, whatever, seven, eight years ago, I was in this room, going through all those meetings and coming up with all these options for schools for what to do, and the consultants, just on and on and on. And all that effort didn't produce anything. And in, in, from my point of view, a very short period of time, you've come up with, the board, the superintendent, has come up with a plan. Is it the perfect plan? No. From my point of view, it's a plan that, you know, a good compromise is where no one gets everything they want. And that's how I see this plan. So I, I've been very clear, I'm not happy with the Stanwell Middle School. So, you know, I, it's just the way it is. So I'm really, really grateful to the work you all have put in for this plan, for this referendum. So, yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Thanks. Anybody else like to make a statement? Our first public comment is now closed, moving on. Yep, we're building throughout, correct. Building, ground, transportation, finance, and safety. Diana?
Thank you. So we did meet last, just asked Thursday, virtually. Some of the highlights of things we talked about, we still do have a good amount of displaced students. So our administrative staff and definitely transportation staff have been working hard at getting them, accommodating them. Tony gave us an update, of course, on the referendum and the plethora of information sessions that he's had, and just to hope that this, you can provide information. You'll see a list of books that are to be disposed. We had an issue in the media center here, where there was some mold and mildew that affected some books. So from my understanding, it's, it's a mixture of books that have kind of reached their maximum use, and then also some that were damaged. Contracts and, so I'm going to move, right now, items A through K. L is the shared services agreement, which we did talk about for both municipalities. It's been a fluid discussion with the committee since the past Thursday, and as well as the municipalities. So Tony's going to talk about that before we go on.
One second. The floor discussion is now open on A through K. Do we have anything? All right, roll call.
Lauren Brunstrom.
Yes.
Martha Dennis.
Yes.
Jim Gallagher.
Yes.
Trace Petrucci.
Yes.
Diana Prissel.
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Marina.
Yes.
Megan Warner.
Yes.
Philomena Hengst.
Yeah.
Kevin Kobalaski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, and then just before we do a roll call vote on L, we've already talked about it a little bit, but obviously, there's been a lot of time and effort that's been made and gone into- Make a motion before we discuss. Oh, sorry. I was just going to go back. Diana?
Sure.
Oh, yeah. Would you discuss, I hope we have to leave for-
That's all right. Diana, make a motion.
Yeah, yeah. Make a motion, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to move item K.
I'll second the motion.
Sorry, item L.
Item L is open for discussion. So I was just going to, just saying really quick, that a lot of time and effort is going to this, I thank the city council and the township, you know, for many back and forth and edits. Obviously, the agreements that we had in place from several years ago were not in line with where we are today and a lot of the changes that we've made in the last six months. So I thank, you know, the board's patience as well, you know, obviously, they've seen many versions of this and provided input as well as we come to a place where I feel like we have a good document that obviously can be evaluated on an annual basis by all parties. Anybody, any, any other board members have anything to say? Take a roll call? All right, Andrew, roll call.
Lauren Brunstrom.
Yes.
Martha Dennis.
Yes.
Jim Gallagher.
Yes.
Trace Petrucci.
Yes.
Diana Prissel.
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Marina.
Yes.
Megan Warner.
Yes.
Philomena Hengst.
No.
Kevin Kobalaski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to personnel, we did meet. Tony, I'll turn over to you to give some- Yes, I'm not on the agenda tonight for personnel, but something I want to mention, and I'll continue to mention it. Hopefully, you saw last week, we released nominations for Governors Educator of the Year awards. So you as parents or your children, so it went to parents, it went to staff, it went to the kids as well. You have the ability to nominate perhaps someone who's played a significant role in your child's life. Obviously, last year was a very challenging year with COVID, and our teachers had an incredible year of hard work. So it's open until, I believe, November, I think it's sixteenth or thirteenth, I'll continue to remind you. The information is on our web, webpage, right on the web, homepage of the website under what's new. So if you have a few minutes or if your child is interested, maybe you can assist them, depending upon their age. The completed nomination forms go back to your building principal, and then we will be putting committees together in December to make a selection for each one of our buildings. And then hopefully this year, last year, we did it later because we were virtual, but this year, the goal would be in March, that we would bring all of our Educators of the Year to a board meeting and present them with certificates and honor them with their families. So I really encourage folks, if you have some time, please nominate someone, because I know it means a lot to our teachers. Yeah, motion to, A and B.
Don't move. Second.
Open for discussion. The floor. All right, roll call.
Lauren Brunstrom.
Yes.
Martha Dennis.
Yes.
Jim Gallagher.
Yes.
Trace Petrucci.
Yes.
Diana Prissel.
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Marina.
Yes.
Megan Warner.
Yes.
Philomena Hengst.
Yeah.
Kevin Kobalaski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So I'm pretty sure most given up in curriculum and technology. Lauren?
Okay. So we have several items up for approval. Actually, let's see, well, no, just one item today, curriculum approval, but many curriculum items on that letter A. So I just some, a few things to highlight. The, obviously, you can see from this, from this list in particular, just a lot of the work that's been happening in the curriculum office and throughout the district. So I just wanted to highlight that we have social emotional learning integrated into our K-12 science curriculum. Our social studies curriculum is also incorporating multiple perspectives, which was something that I think most of you know, maybe not everyone knows, but I'm a historian, I have a PhD history, and so I've been really pushing for, I think, our, those, or to particularly include some of the, the trends and developments in the field that are, that are reflect, I think, where the field is going and how we can empower students in social studies learning. And so I just, I'm really excited and proud to see that, that that has been some work that is really reflected in the curriculum on the agenda for review tonight. And then we're also seeing key social studies practices, like comparing sources, questioning and researching, so students are really moving beyond some of the, the rote memorization that has unfortunately been associated with the fields in the past. And I think that's also a really important component of the type of education we're really seeking and striving for in our district, right? And one that really prepares students to be independent thinkers. And so we have, that's pretty much the, the main thing that I wanted to highlight. We also have a new course in TV and multimedia production that will be offered up here at the high school level, and I think that's really important to highlight as well, as part of our work in expanding our curriculum in new directions. And so please to report that's also for, up for approval. We are going to have a pre-K to six families STEM night that you do need to sign up, or I think today is the last day, right, to sign up, which, or no, self, I'm signing up now. But that, that will take, please, for, for parent, caregivers and parents and family members and their students in the district on Wednesday, October twenty-seventh, is an in-person event, and it's going to have multiple stations with design challenges in the public, in the fall purpose room. So I think that'll really be a fun and interactive event. Is that LPS? Uh-huh. And the target audience is pre-K to six, but everyone is welcome, all students of all, all ages are welcome, and adults. Good for everybody. The crazy eighth math club session is happening now, and there will be another session in spring in both elementary schools, so that's another exciting, I think, extracurricular opportunity that we're glad to highlight here tonight. Mr. Here did the presentation on the, on the access for ELLs and the DLM testing. I also just want to highlight two other things. First, right, just our technology, also pleased that our district is really taking, I think, a forward-looking view on managing cybersecurity, especially, you know, as a district, right, we have a lot of points of contact, potentially, so there's some measures that we're taking there for, starting with staff. And then we also are exploring some other options that we might be able to use in technology that will help enable us to do things like attendance and emergency check-ins more efficiently. So those are some of the things we were exploring and discussing in the committee. And then finally, we're, we're going to be starting a partnership with RBCC, that's the ESL Bridges to Success Program, which is described as a safety net-supported program for people who are first in their family in high school and college. So I think this is also something that will, it has bilingual representatives that are going to come and work with our students on a monthly basis about the college experience. And again, just speaking from my personal experience as somebody who has taught for a long time and with first-gen students, especially first-gen students from Spanish-speaking- especially first gen students from Spanish speaking households. This is, I think, really, I've seen this work happen in university campuses that I've worked at. And I think this is a really important integration and I'm really glad to be able to highlight this as well. It's something that's a partnership with our district in support of our students and helping them to matriculate. We also saw last year, the highest number of students in our ESL program matriculated in close secondary schools. So I think that's also something to highlight as well. So that's going to be a program and that's going to feature also some TCNJ students working as tutors under supervision with our students as well. So it'll be multiple points, I think, of contact for students to really get mentored by close age peers as well as by adults that are in, you know, in the field and trained as counselors in this area. So those are some of the things that I just wanted to highlight. Oh, finally, I'll mention some things that are happening as well is that we, we're going, the district is going to be doing some professional development on the in-service day, AKA the day of their Halloween, which will be, will bring the keynote figure from August back and focus on disability, race and identity. And then an unconference format will take place in the second part of the day that helps to build teacher leaders in the district. And that finally, we, the, our math STEM special projects director, I'm looking over here. Make sure I include all of the aspects of that. It's starting to examine the sequence of math courses at the high school. And I think this is also a really good example of how we're examining our curriculum practices, not because something is wrong or broken, but just to take a look and say, is this really the best reflection, the best philosophy in this field? Is this really serving our students best in the steps and the directions that they want to go? There's no right way to do the sequence, but we're, they're considering if the sequence could flow better if it was rearranged and incorporating teacher feedback particularly in the process as well so that it reflects the experiences that teachers are seeing in the classroom with actual students. So Adam is examining materials and we're looking at schedules to implement this shift. So those are all, again, just reflections of the things that we are looking at in the curriculum and technology committee. And I think highlighting them also shows the connections to all the other work that's taking place throughout the district and in the other board committees. So that's my report. I need to make a motion to move item A. Second, you're all looking, I mean.
Open for discussion.
There is, yeah, there is a B. Thank you. It is at the bottom of the page. Time is out there. This is, we all support each other in getting this work. Yeah, so item B as well is the emergency virtual or remote destruction plan. Obviously, this is an update that removes remote destruction plans that had been put in place last year.
And it's just for, if we have to use it this year, which we didn't realize we were going to have to do it today, but for one grade level that we are.
I need to move A and B for approval.
Open for discussion. Anybody have anything? All right, roll call.
Lauren Brunstrom.
Yes.
Martha Dennis.
Yes.
Jim Gallagher.
Yes.
Trace Petrucci.
Yes.
Diana Prissel.
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Marina. Megan Warner.
Yes.
Philomena Hengst.
Yeah.
Kevin Kobalaski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Policy. Jim Gallagher.
Well, thank you, Kevin Kobalaski. Policy does not meet in October. We have no new policies to bring forward on the first reading, but I will make a motion to approve a series of policies for the second reading, which are listed under item A. Thank you for the second.
All right, open for discussion. Anybody have anything?
So I'll just observe, these are policies we approved last month on the first reading for a variety of, covering a variety of issues.
All right, roll call.
Lauren Brunstrom.
Yes.
Martha Dennis.
Yes.
Jim Gallagher.
Yes.
Trace Petrucci.
Yes.
Diana Prissel.
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Marina.
Yes.
Megan Warner.
Yes.
Philomena Hengst.
Yeah.
Kevin Kobalaski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
School and community. Philomena.
Hi, this is Philomena Hengst. Going to give the school community update. So we discussed community outreach. The referendum videos have been viewed by members of the public. The first two were around 600 views or more. And the third one at the time of the meeting, which was the 19th of October, was 269 views. So we know that there's definitely more since then, but we were happy to hear that the public is engaging with this new format. We also discussed the West Hamwell Township Committee letter and also presenting information that would be more consistent with what we've presented in the past. Also, the committee discussed sharing an infographic with the public for accessibility of information so that people can understand everything thoroughly. And Tony continues to meet with community groups. We also discussed our web presence and social media presence. We were excited to see the monthly newsletter and there was positive feedback that was shared about it. The district also is starting an exciting new initiative, a spotlight on classrooms and interviewing students that we look forward to. And the committee discussed the choice program as well, trying to understand what the three key points are when sending the messaging. And Tony shared that class size, opportunity to participate in athletics and other activities, and a hope for improved facilities were three talking points around the choice program. We discussed student transportation, especially with students who are displaced from the remnants of Hurricane Ida. We also learned that we can use ESSA funding or FEMA reimbursement for the transportation. And finally, we discussed the district's security and safety plan. It was asked how to respond to community members when they inquire about the class three officer process. And the committee discussed how to clarify the process and policy with the community. This would include the administration's agreement to assess the program and provide a recommendation to the Board of Ed in February as we plan for next year's budget process. And that's it.
All right, nothing to move? Okay.
Nothing to move.
All right.
Yeah, just, you know, so the board is aware, we do have two on the agenda for HIBs that we discussed last month, one that was confirmed and one was not.
Okay, need a motion for items A and B?
Some move items A and B.
Second.
All right, open for discussion. Anybody have anything? Okay, roll call.
Lauren Brunstrom.
Yes.
Martha Dennis.
Yes.
Jim Gallagher.
Yes.
Trace Petrucci.
Yes.
Diana Prissel.
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Marina.
Yes.
Megan Warner.
Yes.
Philomena Hengst.
Yeah.
Kevin Kobalaski.
Yes.
Take that whole table there.
Motion carries.
All right, moving into the second part of our public comment, reiterate the rules, three minutes is three minutes. We're only required to give one public comment. If we continue to go over, I will shut the second one down. So we will open up the second public comment now. Three minutes is your max, please, if you'd like to come up and make a statement.
Yeah. There are people in the bill. I just wanted to ask another question. I know that we do the budget, the vote comes in April, so, you know, you review this in the winter and I'm guessing that's where the board can sort of pick and choose pieces, yes, we like this, no, we don't need this. I'm wondering in terms of if the board could address things at that time that they might prefer instead of waiting. For, so for instance, one thing in the, in the shared services agreement that I don't like is that the weapon, the gun can be openly carried. That makes me uncomfortable and I don't see the point. That's in the shared services agreement.
Could that be something that comes up pre-budget? If, if the board were to say, yes, we still think an officer is necessary, but we do not think an openly carried gun is necessary, could that go in there instead of then approving and then waiting to see if it gets amended later? And the other question is, if the, if the board were to say, okay, we don't feel that an officer is necessary, is that the end of the story? Because they know as of right now, if, say, the municipalities didn't approve the shared services agreement, that you could hire somebody who's just not affiliated with our police department. But if, like, if it goes in that there's no officer in the budget, does that therefore mean there is no officer?
So I'll take the first one first.
Okay.
So I think that would be part of the conversation, obviously, when we're having that budget conversation and if we wanted to make a change. So for example, if the recommendation was to have an officer but have, you know, not carry, that would be part of that conversation and that would be an understanding of the board before the budget was adopted, knowing that we're going to have to modify the agreement.
Right.
When we do a renewal. And then the second part, obviously, if the decision was made to go in another direction, that would be the board's decision, meaning like private security or whatever it may be.
But that would have to go in the budget.
Yeah, that would, yeah, because we got to pay for it. So obviously, if, you know, if we were going to go in another direction other than working with each municipality, that would be presented by me, meaning how much it would cost and what it would look like throughout the budget process. And then the board would have to decide, A, is that where we want to go? And B, do we want to pay whatever it's going to cost to be able to do that?
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much.
All right, anybody else like to make a public comment?
Sean Lewis, live in Lambertville. Just wanted to thank all the members of the board for all the community outreach that you've done to advocate for the referendum. Some of us stood up last month and asked you to give us something to go out and talk about and to take control of the narrative. And I think it was well done and I think it was well received by a majority of the community, regardless of what the specific issues are. I appreciate all your efforts. Superintendent Suizo as well, every time I leave my house, you're in whatever space I find myself in. Pick up at Lambertville Academy. I saw you next to the Eggs at Giant at one point. You know, it's, it's been a lot of extra time and thankless doesn't probably begin to cover it. And I appreciate all you've done and looking forward to continuing to work with you going forward.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, anybody else like to make a statement? All right.
Andrea Little again. I'd just like to address Mr. Hewitt. Thank you very much for that presentation tonight. And I'd love to know at some point, maybe in the future, if we could see if there's a progression on what you learned from 2021 and maybe past years and followed students to see if these small groups or different strategies are actually working to create a history for us to understand the building of the program because it's really only been established for like the last five years. So it would be really great to see, I mean, as far as like a really in-depth program. So I'd like to see the data and just seeing like what's going on, what's needed to really build on those resources to see if this could achieve a success. So thank you very much.
Anybody else? All right, second public presentation now closed. We do have a need for executive session tonight. There will be no action when we come out, correct? There will be no action when we come out of executive session other than a German.
We talked three things, HIB cases, student matter, and then superintendent values.
Do you need a motion to go on?
Call in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries?
We have a lot of them.
Yes, you can.
Five minute recess and you will get your own.